Okay, let's call it over to the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Tuesday, November 12th. If I could ask everybody to stand and please recite the pledge of allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, evergreen, and just as our own.
Alright, roll call please.
Jim Batson, John Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Rudy.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Lomsted.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Alright, so you know Jim Batson is absent tonight. Let's see, our agenda, we will have, we'll open up a public comment, anybody likes to speak? Please look at your comments for three minutes. We will have some student recognition, it looks like quite a bit actually. And then a presentation on supporting emergent multilingual students. The president's report will include the update from the school board reps. We'll have a detailed superintendent's report, we'll approve the consent vote agenda that we reviewed last week. We'll have updates from program and personnel, facilities and finance. Any more CEDO coming in? No CEDO and, okay, and no ISB, and that's it. So relatively short agenda.
That wasn't me, Ken. Just for the record, that wasn't me that said that.
Alright, ready to go? Anybody from the public who'd like to speak tonight? Speak now. Okay, so then we'll move on to student recognition.
Good evening, good evening everybody. My name is John Gilliam, principal of Vernon Hills High School, and we have the privilege tonight of recognizing several students and a couple programs, a couple programs who are used to be in here. We had our unified basketball team here last winter, and of course, our female cross-country team has made kind of a consistent run here, and last year was here as a second-place team finish. This year, the team finished 11th, but tonight, we're going to invite Coach Curry up, who's had just an awesome run of excellence over the last few years, to talk about one very special athlete, Rose, who will come up here in a second after Coach Curry introduces her.
Thank you, and thanks for allowing us to be here and recognize our students. Always good to be back to recognize our student athletes. And this year, I have Rose Sheridan, come on up. Rose is a freshman, and she earned all-state honors this year, finishing 18th in the state meet. We've been following Rose, we followed her middle-school career, so we knew coming in that we had a talented runner, but you never quite know what's going to happen when you get to the high-school level, and she burst right onto the scene from the very beginning, and made a statement, and has not looked back since. So, we're really proud of Rose's accomplishments this season, and we hope to see her here more often in the next three years. Thank you.
Alright, then you might be wondering what it takes to get one of these cool uniforms right here. Like I said, last winter, our unified basketball team won the state championship, and they've followed it up here this fall with some success in soccer. So, we're excited to have these individuals here, and I'm going to introduce Coach Sean Kelly to come on up here, and he's going to introduce his student athletes. Come on up, Coach Kelly, give him a hand.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. The Board, the administration, the wonderful support for Special Olympics. It's very, very important to have that support, and I think we have a great group of kids. Third place, let's all stand up and give them a round of applause. So, we have a lot of students here tonight. One of the biggest challenges this Special Olympics soccer team faced was, I think, the mosquitoes that were probably the size of the small birds. A lot of rain, but they really played hard, they did very well, and, you know, they pushed through the rain and the mosquitoes, and they had an awesome, awesome season. So, I'd like to invite all of the Special Olympic athletes and helpers up, and then I'll go through around the names, and then we're going to get your awards in the hallway on the way out. So, we have Gil Johnson, Celia Gomez, Shaw Kernan, Willia Proczowski, Gabriel Reyes, Liam Angeloz, Chase Miller, Chris Morrison, Rafanya Benkeet, Mackenzie Runkie, Libby Carsten, Joey Litch, John O'Connor, Anthony Burko, Nathan Ferreira, Alexa Donato, Anna Scholler, Noah Hewitt, Nicole Spitek, Kylie Spitek, Danielle Parns, Jack McDonald, Bridget Balton, and Joseph Muller. We have two large teams, congratulations to you.
Alright, come on down here, let's get a picture. We'll all try to get together in one big picture over here, and wrap it over this way so we're, so you can see Mrs. Toderick right there, tall guy's back here with me.
Any parents want a big picture from this way?
Yeah.
Don't be shy.
Alright, tall one with the back. You guys should walk up a little tighter here. Make sure you can see the cameras, make sure you can see the cameras. Work, Storm.
Alright, everybody, please, it goes out in the hallway, alright? On behalf of the Board and the District Administration, we want to congratulate all of you, obviously, but parents, we also know that there's been a lot of support for your young people over the years, and driving them to practice, and getting them out of the house on the weekends when they have competition, and supporting them whether they win or lose. And we want you to know how appreciative we are of you and your support for your own children, as well as all the other kids in this district. So, parents and loved ones, if you will, you stand up for a minute and let us give you a round of applause, okay? So, thank you all, and as we always say at this time, you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the Board meeting, but you won't hurt our feelings if you exit out the door and you want to leave, okay? So, thank you.
Alright, next, updates from our student school representatives. I'm sorry, yeah, I'm jumping ahead. Yeah, okay, let's get that. Emergent multilingual students.
Well, last, a couple weeks ago, last month, we had a, just a great discussion and presentation from some young ladies from Libertyville who worked with their best buddies program. We talked a lot about equity and inclusion, we even talked about a name change in one of our programs based on their presentation and recommendation. It was a great discussion, and we want to continue that theme throughout this year, starting tonight, or continue tonight. Tonight, we are privileged to have a couple staff members from Vernon Hills with us from our emergent multilingual program, formerly known as our English learners program. Of course, Vernon Hills has a growing program, as does Libertyville. Allison Riefenberg, who is Libertyville's emergent multilingual program director, I don't know if that makes sense, I'll get used to these words here soon, isn't here tonight, but we do have two of Vernon Hills' finest, Wendy Meister-Loria and Vicky Ream, if I could introduce them, and they're going to talk a little bit about our program here at Vernon Hills High School.
Thank you so much for coming. Allison sends her regrets, she is not well tonight, and so she was not able to make it even though she was here, so we are going to try and do diligence, do due diligence for her. My name is Wendy Meister-Loria, I started in the district 20-some-ish years ago, and this is my colleague.
My name is Vicky Ream, and I have been around and about in different districts, and this is my 26th year in education, 20 of those in bilingual education.
So, I need the clicker. No, that's the wrong click. Perfect. So, one of the things that we really love and that people are very impressed about when we go around to different conferences and talk about the emergent multilingual program, so I got to get used to that as myself, at District 128, is really our whole philosophy of education for these students. One of the things that has sets us apart from other places is that we believe that once a student is identified as an English learner, that he or she should continue to get support as long as language inhibits the student's ability to operate at his or her intellectual ability. So, the state has a standard, but with parental permission, we are allowed to continue to give those students support as they go out through the years. One of the things I want to show you right here is a video that we made for, to show some of our teachers, and this is edited, but this came directly out of the opportunity I had to go on the trip with the administrators and teachers to Berlin, and that whole idea of allowing students to tell their own stories. And so, what we're going to show you here is a clip, and this is a student's response to what is different between education in your country and in the United States here at Vernon Hills.
Hello, my name is Doctor Saichma, I'm from Mongolia. So, first thing I saw in the USA was like how they violate kids and like people. So, in Mongolia, they usually like can use violence against any age of people, but in this country, you can't use any violence and those kinds of stuff in here.
My name is Wendy, and I'm from China. I've been in the United States for five years, almost five, I mean. The big difference between my old school and the one in school here is our grades are mostly on the exam, the final and the quizzes, and if you did bad on the homework or like on the exam, the teacher will blame you. And we don't do presentation that much. We often just sit there and listen to the lecturer, like college student.
So, my name is Japita Tuliva, and I'm from Pakistan. And one thing that is very different in the school is that in my country, we didn't have an opportunity to think on the questions that teachers asked us, because we had to answer on it. On the final book, if we would rephrase it, it would count as an error, and we would get an F. So, yeah, it was very uncomfortable for me at first.
So, you heard three very important things from these student stories, and thank you very much, by the way, for letting me go on that trip. You heard three very important things from these students. Number one, we care about and value our students. We don't use violence, obviously, but it's more than that. The second thing that you heard is that we do not blame students when they cannot learn, that teachers here take it upon themselves to help the students learn. And the third thing is that we expect students to think, not just give the right answer. And so, here's what's amazing, is that our emergent multilingual students get it. They get what we're trying to do. One of the things we wanted to show you, these are the general regions our students come from. So, Mexico, some South Central America, Asia, South Asia, Eastern Europe, and former Russian Republic, and those kinds of regions. These are the demographics that we have of our students right now. So, you can see that at Vernon Hills, there are 49 students representing 19 different languages, and 14 of those students are duly identified. That means that they are emergent multilingual students at the same time as they have been identified as special education students. Libertyville is a little bit different. Libertyville has 17 students representing seven different languages, eight of their students are duly identified. Here, you can see the difference in courses that we offer at the different schools. So, right now, at Vernon Hills High School, we are offering two, an EL English 1 and 2, a 3 and 4, then a 1 and 2, and a 3 and 4 in literacy. Those 3 and 4 classes are pretty substantial in number. We offer an EL Biology class that if we have numbers of students who carry on the next year, we can flip to an EL Physical Science class. We have three sections of EL support, that's where students can bring their work from all their other classes, and I can help that, I can help them with that. They get extended time, other accommodations. And then, we have a class that Vicky teaches, where she actually pushes in to different classrooms, multiple classrooms, works with those teachers, and helps with the students who are in those classrooms. Those are duly identified students. And then, if she can't go into a class, she pulls those students out, and again, creates specific lesson plans for those students to meet their needs. At Libertyville, you see that they have EL English, one class, all the different levels, and one EL Support class. Allison teaches three classes in the traditional program.
Here you can see, we have some standards, we have the WEDA standards, and that is for just like our language acquisition. However, because our goal is to help students to exit out of the program and transition into the mainstream classes, we also abide by the various standards, the science standards, social studies standards, also our ELA standards. And so, we use all of those within our content, we teach the kids those skills, and we also make sure to discuss those types of things with the mainstream teachers, so that we can be sure to provide those same experiences to the kids, so that once they go into a mainstream classroom without the language support, they can seamlessly transition in, and they are performing just as their monolingual English peers. This here is to highlight the fact that now, with our science standards, the ESSA standards, our EL students are counted equally as all biology students when it comes to this particular assessment. In the essence of time, I think we will skip this one, which would actually have led into the different types of language. So, we have two different types of language. We have what's the social language, which is the basic interpersonal skills, communication skills, as well as our cognitive academic language proficiency. That's all the stuff that we don't see. So, for example, you might approach a student who speaks English flawlessly, but then they are in a classroom, and they're struggling, and you, and it's kind of hard to understand what in the world is going on. It's because they haven't acquired that academic language that would allow them to be successful in the class. And the flip, sometimes, many of the students that we receive here in Vernon Hills for our EL program, they are very, they're at least at grade level or above in their native language, but we can't see what they know, because they don't have that language in English to show that. So, in that respect, we do make sure that they are acquiring the language as they continue with the social language acquisition. Here's an example of the fix and counts. You and I see the word pouts and stomps, and we know exactly what those words mean. We consider that kind of social language, and if you notice, it ties into an academic term. However, for our EL students, that word pouts, that word stomps, is just as important and very difficult to understand as that word mechanism. So, for us, it's very important for us to continue to teach all facets of the language, whereas we take it for granted that it's something that we know. Some of our students consider that like tier-one words versus tier-three words. All words are tier-three words for our students as they acquire the language. This year so far, we've had the great opportunity to talk to our peers, talk to staff about our students. So, at a faculty meeting at the very beginning of the year, we were able to show some of our colleagues exactly what you've seen here, and then we've had a lunch and learn already. Many of our colleagues wanted to know more about the cultural facets of our students, what makes it different for them, why do students act a certain way or behave a certain way, because their cultural experiences. So, we did that part, as well as giving the teachers strategies on how to teach listening and speaking within the classroom. In February, we will give another lunch and learn, where we focus more of that, the writing, yeah, the writing and the reading portions. Also, we were invited to speak to our new staff, and we were able to discuss with them the different standards and how they can support the students in the class, because it not only helps them to differentiate for our EL learners, but it also helps them to differentiate for the struggling learner in their classrooms.
So, this is the plan that Libertyville has laid out. Because Allison is working by herself, it's a little bit trickier to get that in, but they also have three different things. One is, rather than addressing everyone, they want to address the counselors and the team leaders, and deal with placement and all of those kinds of things. Because they don't deal with it as regularly as we do here, it's an area of need. Additionally, lunch and learns for the staff, and you can see the different things that they want to do. And then, again, because their students aren't spread out throughout the building as much as ours, our is training for specific teachers and dealing with their areas. And that's it. Do you have any questions for us?
Before anyone can ask a question, I know Wendy didn't want to shoot her own horn, but I will. So, the experience she had of designing the storytelling lesson from Berlin, we had an author who works with classic magazines traveling with us and learning from the 40 people in Berlin who were Teachers of the Year from across the country. She interviewed everyone throughout the experience, and while they were designing strategies to implement in their own districts. She recently posted a blog about what she learned from the educators on the experience, and Wendy was one of two teachers featured in her blog about the experience because of the storytelling lesson that she designed as a result. So, congratulations to Wendy.
I'll ask just one question. So, these guys, I mean, they come in with these fairly substantial cultural differences in how education is approached in their home countries. When they come here, what kind of support do they typically get from their families? Because their families are used to abstaining, I'll call them biases.
Yeah, that's a great question, and that is actually an area that can cause significant friction between students and their parents, is because parents don't understand how school is done here. Here's a very good example that you could relate to, is for instance, extracurricular activities. The majority of countries around the world that we deal with, it is nothing but your exams that get you into school. And your exams are word-for-word verbatim from textbooks. And so, students don't study beyond those exams. They come here, and we're saying, you know, something, if you want to be a top-tier student, anyone in the colleges in the United States really pretty much believe anyone can be a 4.0 student if all they do is do academics. And so, we have to, in that area, we not only educate the student about that, but we strongly encourage every time we have communication with parents, and we explain the whole process. And here would be some clubs. Now, do I suggest the esports club to a parent? No. I would, I might suggest things like, well, you know, would you consider math team? Or, you know, here are some other organizations, and this is good for them. If they have an aptitude in a sport, this is great, because they'll be interacting with Native American speakers, which is what they want. And so, that communication piece is very important when that comes up. And sometimes, to be honest, parents still don't understand. And then, if we can work with people within their communities to help communicate that message, people who have been here longer, have students who are successful at the college and university level, we can leverage some of that, that, you know, social, social stuff.
Great. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. When students come in and have limited English, and they're from a country that you have to bring in like translators, or what does that mean?
This is what she teaches.
So, this is what I've been doing for, it seems like forever. So, usually, in the past, I've had students where they were newcomers, or within six months of being in the program, who have little to know English. Think about when your child, if you have children, or you've seen little children, when they start to acquire language. It's mostly from mimicking, imitating, mocking, and it's trial and error. Well, with my students, they already have knowledge in another language, now it's using those skills. So, I use a lot of, I still do a lot of the repeating and imitating, however, lots of pictures. I speak with my hands, if I have to tie my hands behind my back, I would not be able to speak. Also, facial expressions, a lot of charades types of things, and thank goodness for the internet, because now I can just go onto Google Images and show them the images, and have them show me what they visualize as they start to understand. Also, then, with those students, once they do understand, for example, I had students write a one-to-two sentence summary about an article, part of an article we're reading, and she asked if she could draw rather than write. Sure, not a problem. And when you look at the images, it's very clear, she understood the basic part, the basic one-to-two sentence structure concept of what was, what the article was about, what that paragraph was about. So, it's a lot of play.
Great stuff. Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, now, updates from our student school representatives.
So, we'll start us off. So, to begin with a few school ongoings, on November 1st, we had a short celebratory breakfast to welcome the newest members of the NHS, or seniors that are inducted into NHS. So, 14 seniors were inducted, and NHS is really happy to see the club's growing membership. We had another celebratory breakfast on this passing Friday to recognize our school's National Merit Hispanic Scholars, commended students, and semifinalists. Families of the students were invited to attend, and it was great to have this supportive atmosphere to recognize the students for their performance on the test last year. During the week leading up to the big November 1st deadline, the CRC had open walk-in hours for students who wished to get help from Ms. Belstra before they submitted some of their college applications. Many students took advantage of this opportunity, and a decent number also submitted, bless you, their first applications in their CRC. you, their first applications in their CRC with Ms. Belstra by their side, so that was really wonderful. On October 10th, AP Environmental Science went on a field trip to a few different locations in the area as a part of their unit on water and water pollution. They went to the Central Lake County Joint Action Water Agency first, then went to a marsh in the area, and finished off the day at a sewage treatment facility. Despite some rain and cold weather, the students walked away with a greater appreciation for the work that goes into maintaining a balanced water system and for our access to clean water. A couple of updates with clubs. The debate team had a tournament at Fremont on November 2nd. Sophomore Sarah Dowden took home a speaking award, and a number of novice debaters had an impressive 4-1 win record. And many seniors from the school also judged novice rounds at the tournament. Overall, everyone had a fun time and received great feedback from their judges. Libertyville's Environmental Action Force, otherwise known as LEAF, began planting in the garden this weekend. The club is only planting species that are native to Illinois, and many people from both LEAF and NHS, as well as a couple of environmental science students, were able to help out in the planting. Many people turned out despite the cold, and everything is going according to schedule. And with fine arts, I know that we were updating you about the musical All She Looked Up. On November 3rd, the cast, crew, and pit said a sad farewell to their time together working on the musical. The musical is most theater kids' favorite part of the year, and it was an especially sad goodbye to the show for all of our seniors since it's their final musical here at LHS. And lastly, in fine arts, ILMEA was last Saturday, November 9th, and it was at Grace Lake North High School. We had 32 LHS students combined from band orchestra and choir who were invited to create beautiful music with a select group from each high school in our district. We're very impressed that we had such a high number of students from our school able to participate, and we're so proud of them for being invited to attend.
All right, so moving on to health and wellness. So, Red Ribbon Week was a huge success, with many people learning new facts about drugs and alcohol, and most importantly this year, vaping. The health fair at the end of the week was a huge hit. Student Becca Luckey said, "It's my favorite part of Red Ribbon Week and my favorite thing out of the whole year. I absolutely love to see all the great things that we have in our community and help us stay healthy." It is such a great thing to learn about living a healthy life in terms of emotional and mental health. The second-ever Real Talk is currently happening right now in the Studio Theater, and that's where Maya is, so she wasn't able to attend tonight. And so, this year, it's called Inside the Life of a High Schooler: The Real Truth. The event includes a health fair for students who come and a simulation of the inside of a teenager's bedroom, highlighting how kids may be hiding illegal substances in their room for parents for the first half. Including the event will be a panel of students and topical experts, including Judge Stride, Nate Biggs, Dr. Nelson, Dr. Calentis, and students Grace Kraft and Gianna Whitney. Moving on to sports, girls volleyball had their sectional championship on October 31st. They beat Cary Grove, making them sectional champions. They finished the season off against Fremont for super sectionals, although they lost this final, they lost this final game, but the team has had an amazing season, and we're so proud of how far they have come. Captain Kelly Hopper said that this season was so fun, not only because of the success we had, but the new friendships that were made. We aren't done yet, and we hope to make it to state next year. Girls swim and dive had a conference this weekend, and we're so proud to say that they finished fourth place at the NSC Championship. Senior Raina Wa described the team sentiment, described the team sentiment when she saw the team as extremely excited and ecstatic. The Halloween traditions have continued this year for our seniors, with risky business for the girls and grandmas for the boys. Men's year once became disruptive during passing periods by falling down the stairs on purpose as a joke, causing many collisions and delays to the class. However, after the announcement made by Dr. K, most people complied and stayed safe. Many opted to kneel or crouch instead, just to keep the tradition going. And we also have a couple student concerns and points. So, a number of students have noticed the recent removal of Chromebook extensions, and many understand that this isn't the primary concern, like regarding that many games are known as distractions, that teachers don't enjoy having in class. But they're mostly disappointed that some popular productivity-based extensions, for example Momentum, have been blocked. And so, many students have questions as to why this occurred, and we were hoping to shed some light on the issue.
So, they're going to slowly start implementing some extensions that are actually useful for students, as we find things like Momentum, that they are useful and they're helping out in classrooms and things like that. But we can't just, like, one by one, take them away, so we have to kind of start with all of them and slowly start adding them back in. So, there will be extensions coming back after a while.
And then, the second thing is that many seniors, as we're all aware, were pretty upset when it was decided that quotes in the yearbook would be discontinued. So, an idea has been proposed for students to create designs on graduation caps as another way to express themselves and say a final goodbye to high school. And we were wondering what the board thinks about this possibility.
Yeah, have you talked to Dr. K?
It's been mentioned at principal advisory board meetings, but I'm not certain as to how far it's from. I'm not entirely certain as to how far it's from.
Okay. Why don't we start with you guys following up with Dr. K, okay? And then, we can have some additional discussion about that if we need to. Okay?
At Vernon Hills, we want to say congratulations to the National Merit semifinalists and commending students who were recognized at a breakfast on Friday, November 8th. And there were some counselors, administration, and some of their most inspirational teachers from high school were also invited. So far this school year, we've had over 325 successful tutoring sessions in the Academic Resource Center, also known as the ARC, with great feedback from teachers and students. And... Before finals, some tutors will host study sessions in the ARC to prepare those who want some extra review, and tutors are volunteering their time during finals to help others. On Friday, November 8th, Vernon Hills graduate author Jessica Turella spoke at a lunch and learn about the process of writing her first published novel, and she answered student questions about writing and her career. On Thursday, November 7th, there was a Dare to Empower lunch and learn for female identifying students with discussion topics such as emotional competency and empowerment strategies in school and in the workplace. Spanish for honors classes recently took a field trip to the Pilsen neighborhood in Chicago. Students went on a tour of the National Museum of Mexican Art. They looked at art pieces related to the Day of the Dead holiday. They viewed murals around Pilsen, and they ate some delicious food. It was an enjoyable and immersive experience for all the students who attended. We also want to say congratulations again to the girls cross-country team. And the girls swimming and diving is the last sport competing this fall. This past weekend, they took first place in the CSL North Conference Meet. Congratulations to them, and we look forward to see what they achieve for the end of their season. Okay. Our school musical, Mamma Mia!, had a great success over the past two weeks. The show had four sellouts, and our senior night had over 400 attendees. The musical was a huge success, and we want to extend a congratulation to everyone that took part in it. This past Friday, Whispers, which is our school literary magazine, hosted its second annual open mic night. This event takes place at the Hawthorne Mall in the bookstore, and students were invited to participate to share a short poem, story, or spoken word. Our new gym class, Life, took a field trip this last Monday to Whole Foods and Orange Theory. At Whole Foods, the class was guided with two nutritionists, and they explained the benefits of choosing organic foods and how to look and understand nutrition labels. The group then had lunch and headed to Orange Theory, in which they took a workout class and were guided by instructors and trainers. Everyone in the class said it was very enlightening, and they did learn a lot. High schoolers from both Libertyville and Vernon Hills had the opportunity to be snowflake leaders at the annual middle school event. This took place on Friday, November 1st, at the Middle School South. The day consisted of breakout sessions, dinner, small groups, and additions to speakers. Both high schoolers and middle schoolers had a fun night. Our students in government classes are currently participating in civic engagement projects. The goal of these projects is for students to research issues in Lake County and to research the issue, then try to raise awareness and spark government action. For example, some students have organized donation drives, were interrepresentatives, attended village meetings, and among other things. The project is a great way to teach students to get involved in local government. Our Vernon Hills Student Council exec board and some of our VHS exec board members as well headed to Lake Zurich High School for our leadership training with multiple other high schools. The day included panels with adult speakers and student speakers, and in addition to some breakout sessions. Students discussed and brainstormed ideas for leadership and school activities. This helped provide inspiration to our students from sharing and comparing and contrasting with other high schoolers.
All right, if you want to say something, why don't you just go up to the podium.
Can you tell us who you are, where you're from?
All right. Hi, I'm sorry, I know this is random. My name's Chris Boyle, I'm from LHS. I had a question regarding the senior quote issue. So, I know it didn't happen in the D-128 actual, like, area. So, I was wondering why, like, we were being, like, our quotes were being taken away when we weren't the ones who actually caused the issue.
Well, I think that's, it's actually not a board issue, that's actually a building issue, and that discussion happened at LHS, so that should be addressed with Dr. Calentis, and if students are from Vernon Hills, they should address that with Dr. Gilliam.
Well, Dr. Calentis sent out an email, like, to us, telling us why we couldn't have our senior quotes this year. And I was, like, to me, like, the email was just kind of like, I didn't really get the point of, like, why our quotes are being taken away when we weren't the ones who actually caused the issue of senior quotes. So...
I would say you need to talk to Dr. Calentis, okay? And I know he'll have a conversation with you about that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Good. All right, great job. Thanks, guys. Let's see. All right, so one other thing on my report. I have collated all of our data, that's the good news. The other good news is I have printed it out. That's the end of the good news. The bad news is I left it at home. So, I'll be in touch. All right. Generally, we're pretty well spread on the meetings we intend to go to in the tri-conference, but there is some overlap, and I know most of us put in like two or three things at the same time. So, I would say, look at what I send out, and, you know, frankly, do your own soul searching and make a decision, say, hey, I intend to go here, and I'll work it out. Okay? Best way, but... Okay, superintendent.
Okay. A little more good news this evening. District 128 was honored last Thursday evening by being named to the Chicago Tribune, 2019 Top Workplace. And there is the recognition. The district is among the top mid-sized employers in the Chicago area. The honor is based on feedback from an employee survey conducted by an independent organization. That survey is anonymous, so the employees do not know why they're being surveyed. We had a very good survey return. There was a representative group of District 128 employees, and I think that's the next slide. We have that. You may recognize us there. So, that represents every level of the organization, all the way up to your board president, Dr. Pat Gruy. The recognition ceremony was held at the United Airlines Room at Soldier Field, and one of the highlights of the evening. It was very cold, but was being able to block out on the actual field, which was really cool. So, the Tribune always does a very nice job with the recognition ceremony, and more importantly, you know, our organization is made up of great people. And we're great because of those great people, and it's really nice to be recognized for having great people and being a great place for people to work. So, congratulations to everyone. Yeah, that deserves a round of applause. That's great. Pat, any comments about that?
No, it's great. I think we brought the pair of students good luck that time.
We did. Apparently, I didn't even make that connection. That's actually good. I'll go with that, whatever works, okay?
One winning team led to another.
There you go. That was good. Very good. VHHS Dean Madeline Powell was named Illinois State Deans Association Dean of the Year at last week's Illinois State Deans Association Conference, so congratulations to Ms. Powell. District 128 was pleased to host 400 senior residents of the district for its annual dinner and show at VHHS on October 30th. Members of the VHHS National Honor Society along with D-128 and VHHS staff were happy to spend the afternoon with senior guests and shared an amazing performance of the VHHS musical, Mamma Mia! We hope to see all of the seniors once again in December at the Senior Dinner and Holiday Concert at LHS. And I wanted to add, before we leave this piece of good news, I wanted to add one other thing, that in recognition of the top workplaces, our staff received a special gift today in their mailboxes. We've asked them to show off that gift tomorrow. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, the board received a similar gift tonight, and I would like you to unroll your shirts and have Mary maybe get a picture of us holding those shirts. Okay, that's your top workplace's shirt? So, if you want to jump up with that, we'll just come right down to the end here, and then we can get back to our business. Sure. Mine's in the car, so... So, do you want us to alternate Mary where you want us to? Okay, so someone can do... And I would just add that all district employees will be wearing their shirts tomorrow, so it will be our Chicago Tribune Top Workplaces recognition for tomorrow. And one thing on recognition before I move into the rest of my report, Friday, November 15th, will mark the official statewide observance of School Board Members Day in the state of Illinois. The honorary day is an opportunity for a school district and community to show support for its board of education and their commitment to providing a local voice to a vision for public education. Board members craft a vision and mission that reflects the desires expressed by community parents and residents. Their role is a way to create lasting educational opportunities that reflect local desires and put in place a pathway to success for each and every child. School board members serve the public as unpaid volunteers for the benefit of students and community residents. They are the frontline advocates that provide a local voice and vision for the district. Board members dedicate a significant amount of their own personal time to the district, something that is often overlooked. They often attend extracurricular events, participate in professional development opportunities, and work very long hours to ensure students have access to educational resources they need to succeed. This dedication often takes board members' time away from their own families. Successful communities have high-quality public schools, which equates to a thriving local economy and a destination community for families. A great school system is a source of local pride among residents. The leadership and vision exemplified by board members directly impacts not only the school district, it touches the lives of nearly every resident in one way or another. So, since we're meeting this evening, we have a certificate for all of you that we'd like to present. Do one more photo op here. But before we do that, you know, we've had an incredible run over the past two years in this school district of working together to help students be healthy and safe, and to grow and achieve at just amazing levels. And I will tell you, as somebody that's been in the district 15 years and the last 12 years as a superintendent, as I often tell all of you individually and sometimes in small groups, we would not have accomplished everything we've accomplished in this district without a world-class school board as well. And I want you to know on behalf of the administrators and the teachers and the staff in the district, and I'll speak on behalf of the students, we appreciate all the time and effort you spent working with us, partnering with us, to ensure that we have two world-class high schools and we're really serving kids. So, we're going to stop right now and give you all a round of applause, and we're going to give you a certificate and take one more picture. Thank you. Okay, Pat? Yeah, just come up. Lisa, yeah, why don't you guys just come up? Kevin? Karen? Casey? And James is back to himself. Okay. Why don't you guys come together and help get it? And get us all in there? Okay, would you all come up, students, board reps? I'm going to take one with you. Okay, would you all come up, students, board reps? I'm going to take one with you. Let me do two and two. Yeah, you, yeah, right, you guys get it. Alright, a round of applause for the school board.
I'll just make, I'll make my comment.
Sure.
So, just so you guys know, I'm amazed how often, I get feedback actually from people who work with, outside of the district, who work with other boards. And they, a number of them have made comments to me recently saying, you know, you guys have a really good board. It's not always like that. So, you know, I just convey my thanks to everybody. And I know even the last couple of years, I mean, almost half of the board is new. And I think we've been able to maintain the working relationships and everybody's playing a role, everybody's kind of playing a little different role. I think that's what's always made us very successful. So, you know, my thanks to all of you and let's keep it up.
Thanks really.
Chat?
Yeah, I, I just want to thank you as well. I know I speak on behalf of Tom, but the support that we get as schools from you all as board members is, it's remarkable. It's fantastic. And so I, you know, I've said this to maybe a few of you, it's a somewhat thankless job, but, you know, whether it's hearing teachers talk about trips that you support, or it's giving tours of the building and, you know, engaging in conversations about what's going on, sitting with you on board rep interviews, it's just a, it's just a privilege to work at a school district with leadership like that. So on behalf of the schools, I think Tom and I would want to say thanks as well, so thank you.
Not to go on the thank you too much, but again, on behalf of the students, we're just so grateful.
Guys, enjoy this evening, okay?
Just all the opportunities that we've been afforded and all the resources that we have at our schools, we're all just so incredibly grateful for the ways that we're able to use them. And it really does make a huge difference in our day-to-day school, like, experience. And clearly, like, the outcomes and like where our students wind up and how like fulfilled they feel, like, it definitely reflects this. And so again, thank you so much for everything that you do.
Just like giving a different perspective, as someone that used to like move often when I was a child, I did attend a lot of schools moving around, probably around like seven different schools for each year of middle school, actually, which is pretty intense. But I can tell strength and weakness of like different schools I've been to and how much like administration or board cares and how they provide resources for students. So I really do see all the privileges and blessings we have in both Vernon Hills and Liberty ville, and so thank you for that.
You guys are worth it, really. Okay, anything else?
Pretty nice, feel good.
Very nice, yeah. Makes me feel really warm on a nice cold morning.
Much deserved. Okay, next on the superintendent's report tonight is the amended 2019-2020 committee and board meeting schedule. And the reason for the amendment here is, as some of the veteran board members will remember, for years, we had the program personnel committee first, which tends to be the shorter of the two committee meetings, and followed by the FNF facilities and finance meeting, which tends to be the longer meeting. When Matt Thurman was elected on the board a couple of years ago and appointed to the P&amp;P Committee, he was coming from downtown from his work, and so we flipped those two meetings to accommodate his work schedule. And it's become evident again that we need to flip back to our original because the FNF committee meetings simply take a little bit longer time. And what we'll do, we really need to post a time on the agenda. We've kicked around and I think Don has mentioned, you know, the possibility of saying with the FNF meeting, you know, or immediately after the meeting. Legal counsel has told us consistently that we need to put a target time for the meetings. If we don't meet that target, it's okay. So what we will do is we will add the following language to our agendas in parentheses. And that is, we will say, or immediately following the P&amp;P meeting, if the P&amp;P meeting extends beyond 6:00 PM. So we just add that little caveat on the agendas and anybody that's looking for public will know that that's the case. So, other than that, that is really, we have to do an official amendment. The last two months, we just flipped it and now it's time, since we're going to institute that again, that we actually reflect that on the amended board and committee meeting schedule. So Pat, with that said, we would recommend the board's approval of the amended 2019-20 committee and board meeting schedule.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the amended 2019-2020 committee and board meeting schedule. Second?
Alright, any further discussion? Just one comment, but that does mean in the unlikely event of P&amp;P ending at 5:45, we would wait until 6:00.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I look forward to that.
Yeah.
That's it.
He doesn't have some issue.
Not that I can remember, but you've been around a long time.
It's been a while.
Any other discussion? Alright, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Castle.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, next on the superintendent's report this evening is the 2019 Illinois School Report Cards. Rita did an extensive review of the report cards. She's going to hit a few of the highlights this evening, probably leading with the most important news, and then we'll move on from there. So Rita?
I think the most important news is that we did review this thoroughly at committee, but it really highlights again the quality of the support that both schools receive from the board and the community, the quality of our educators, and the dedication of our students, because this data is really student data. We're sharing tonight an overview of the standardized assessment results in the district, as well as the results of our school report card, which again, were thoroughly reviewed at the committee meeting. Our AP story continues to be one where we provide greater access to a larger number of students to AP coursework and success on AP exams. As we've increased participation in the AP program over the years, we consistently expose more and more students to college-level curriculum while in high school, and those students continue to perform at very high levels of success, earning threes and fours at the same rates that they were when we started reporting this data in 2006, although many more students are earning the benefits of success in AP courses through placement and credits at their universities. We continue to track the ACT composite at the school, although we're now comparing apples to oranges a bit. ACT previously was administered to every student in the district as part of Illinois Accountability. Now, only about 70% of our students report scores on the graduating class ACT data, which makes up this composite. You can see that the state average on ACT has risen as well, but as always, D128 students are far outperforming state averages and ACT scores. And the report card news are, both of our Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School report cards, they're now accessible online, and both schools have earned the highest designation in the state as exemplary schools. This means that the schools are performing in the top 10% of the schools across the state with no underperforming subgroups, based on a number of indicators, which includes our SAT scores from the School Day Administration as one of those indicators. So, we could get into much more detail, but since we've done that already at the committee level, we'll just celebrate the successes of our students and know that while the data is good, we always see room to improve and we're continually working with students who need greater support, as you saw in our earlier presentation on emerging multilingual students.
It's always a journey, it's not a destination. So it's continual and continual improvement is, is really one of the hallmarks of this district and what we all do together. So, we are always going to seek to do better year over year by our students.
Can I ask one question? On the AP, not the scores, but the enrollment, do we have any comparative data, let's say, compared to Stevenson, New Jersey, and some of our Illinois high schools?
So, participation in the AP program overall has increased. And the most recent study I've seen, I belong to the Chicago Area Directors of Curriculum and Assessment, where we've done some local studies, but the person who gathered that data and shared with us is not, is retired and is no longer developing those studies. So the most recent that I've seen is 2012 or 14, so not, not recent data, but at the time, he developed a scatter plot of all of our CADCA area schools and adjusted for the socioeconomic level of the community. And D128 at that time was performing well in comparison to neighboring schools, and we've only increased enrollment since then. So, the best way of gathering that data is through a study like this, and I can suggest through my organization that we revisit that. I know that there are those who love to do that kind of work and have departments devoted to that kind of work in some of the larger districts, so I'll raise that in our group and...
It's generally voluntary for schools to submit that data and do that kind of a
comparison. But the brief answer is, there were times, I've tracked that study since about 2006, I think, or was the first study that I saw. And D128 has greatly improved access to students over that time and steadily gained in comparison to other schools in terms of access to the AP program.
Okay.
Is this when we compare ourselves to somewhat equivalent districts? Is this report card a good tool to use to benchmark our success compared to other schools? Are there other tools that we use when we look to benchmark how we're doing compared to our peers?
This is one way of doing it, and I think the state has certainly tried to include indicators that go beyond the standardized assessment measures. So we're looking at do students come to school, our graduation rate, the college and career readiness indicators that are currently not part of the equation in the school report card, but will be coming online in the next couple of years, are really going to be kind of effective ways to measure not just how we perform in terms of academic indicators, but also how we make sure that every student succeeds and that we're addressing the needs of all of our students.
In terms of comparing subgroups in our district?
Comparing subgroups in our district. So, in statewide comparisons, we're doing very well. Being exemplary means that we're ranked in the top 10% of schools across the state, so I would imagine that the, there are other exemplary schools in our area, but we're all, you know, we're doing well and those indicators seek to report a broader array of school actions and supports than previously when it was based on a single test score.
Sure. So there's a lot of data contained in these reports, so it would be fair to say, it's one tool that we can use to measure our success, but certainly, even though it has a lot of data and it's very rich in certain areas, it's not the only tool that should be used when we look at not only our own performance, but how we compare to other districts?
Yeah. Measuring what matters is a conversation that happens frequently across the district and how we measure how well students are acquiring the attributes of our daring mission, when we look at how well students are accessing programs beyond AP, accessing programs that support their post-secondary interests, help them discover themselves, make vertical movements from one program to another. You know, we look at all of that internally, we look, we measure the performance of our subgroups and know that while gaps exist, that we address the whole student and look at students as individuals to meet their social and academic needs. So, we compare the progress of students within our district, but when we look at local comparisons, things like the report card and the other standardized measures are probably the easiest thing to compare. Access to post-secondary opportunities through our college and career resources centers, another thing that we look at, our students being able to access the universities of their choice and other post-secondary opportunities. So...
That's great, I appreciate that. It's very helpful to put tools like this in perspective so that we can use them appropriately.
Yeah, yeah. It's one measure of student success that now includes broader measures than it used to, but we still know that our internal, you know, review of how every student is progressing is probably the most important work that we do, looking at students as individuals and making sure that they are able to succeed and to pursue their post-secondary dream.
If you juxtaposed our district against a district that was solely focused on driving test scores, for example, they might in fact have higher test scores, but they won't have as well-rounded and prepared students based on what we're trying to drive in our daring mission, for example. So you can look on paper and say, eh, that school's maybe a little higher than we are in demographics, but their approach to doing that may be, you know, solely test-driven, score-driven. They're not working in a whole-child model like we have historically here in this district for a long time, so...
It's challenging our board reps too. I'm curious as to what you think we should measure as indicators of your success in high school. Right? What would you deem a successful high school experience?
I think that one thing for sure is like how students feel that their classes are preparing them beyond the scope of just memorizing material. So, sort of like the students in the video that we saw earlier, we're talking about, like, one issue that's pretty common in schools is that you're really just reciting material or learning it just for the sake of learning content for a test. But one thing that I think our school does pretty well at the moment, but it's hard to quantify, is like how practical our knowledge can be and like how broadly applicable it is.
Another thing, I feel like a lot of times, you take classes because, you know, they're required. So another, one would be how a person is able to like fulfill their curiosity and discover their passions and try to figure out what they maybe want to do in life or at least major in.
On the other hand, I think a lot of parents and people that potentially want to move to this district do look at the test scores. For example, many years ago, my parents were considering moving just because of our house, my mom wants a newer house. But, they ended up staying in Vernon Hills because they love the school district, they love the opportunities that me and my brother are provided with, they love that we have teachers that support us and staff that are able to get us assistance to get us where we want to be in the future. So, a way that potential buyers in Vernon Hills view our schools at a first glance is from test scores. So I think test scores are so important. While student curiosity is a great thing to have, what a lot of people see at first is the test score. So that's something that we have to continue working on.
I think this is kind of like woven off a bit of other information from this same report card, but likewise, you got the, because a lot of, I mean, Libertyville performs just as well. And when you're like looking at the two other comparisons that go in is like, for most of like the families, my family friends that have been like kind of deciding between the two schools is the atmosphere of the schools, the, how the school, like the student body acts, the staff and all that. And in my journalism class, we were discussing like as a publication being more inclusive before like we interview for sources and all that. And we were looking at data and I just pulled out this one, which is the most recent one, for our Vernon Hills High School, for the 2019 year, our student body is 59% white, while our staff is at, one second, last year it was around 90 and this year it's 94.6. So we were discussing how Vernon Hills is typically described as more diverse than Libertyville, but Libertyville is still as diverse, but the staff really is not. And we were discussing how our school has, is like encouraging to hire a lot of like Vernon Hills alumni, which is a great thing. But we're also considering how maybe our school should be reaching out to different people because the teachers, the people like the students look up to as role models. If you have a diverse kind of like staff, that also impacts the students and it does increase learning because a lot of our teachers, while they are very experienced people and very educated people, sometimes they are put in situations where they have to present or explain something that they necessarily don't like relate to or fully understand, such as like, for literature, a lot of our classes have white teachers trying to teach literature that goes about black history and as much as educated and much as they read and much as they prepare, there is just that like connection that would always be missing.
Okay, good comments?
All things that we're working on measuring too. Well-meaned, thank you.
I'll tell you what, one of my favorite metrics is, we ran across this, it's something we ran across Sunday on Friday night at the... Sunday on Friday night at the big event. They said, and this was the person whose son went to West Point. I forget who was with him, but they came on, my son was very well-prepared. So they're well-prepared to go to West Point, you know, kudos.
Okay, good. All right, next, we're going to combine number four and five and basically call that our capital projects updates. Mark, what's shaking right now?
Nothing. It's all broken. At Libertyville High School, we're moving forward with punchless items in, in the aquatic center. Working around the scheduling using the pool. So going in early morning, et cetera. So we'll be moving forward and working with Thanksgiving time and we're ready to get the teams in there. A bunch of mine are south, just working through it. The LHS pool renovation is, is going well. We poured some rest of concrete down the lower hole towards the north end. And the ductwork that we get to get between the two sections of building is all completed. So now we're going to finish up the deck so we can pour the concrete on the second level. Moving forward, moving forward there, as well as working on exterior stuff that, we got the equipment through the walls. Now they've ripped up the openings and the equipment room to the, to the west side of existing building. Over here at Vernon Hills, progress is moving forward on the classroom addition. They've got, they're working on interior walls. They've got some door frames out there. We're going to basically electrical, all that good stuff inside the building. We're working to get a roof on here soon for the cafeteria expansion. So we can dry that in and we're going to keep, keep moving forward there with more brickwork. And also moving forward with our critical peers. We believe tonight you see some semis out there. Our equipment is here from out of state to put those peers in the ground and so we can keep moving forward with the gym addition.
You're sure being the weather's going to get warmer and stay warm all winter, right? So we can keep working?
We're looking for that in the summer.
Okay.
What do we need to get done to be able to keep the gym going during the winter time? I mean, at one point, were we thinking, were we thinking we were going to have a wall shop? It would be a long way.
We are going to start with walls. So we do have winter conditions figured in to be putting up walls. But our, our big obstacle has been the existing pool piping underground that's 18 feet deep. Making sure these peers that, you know, we're in the exact spot because we are, you know, we're within a foot of them and just making sure that we don't.
They don't want to.
We're accurate when we, when we put the period in the ground.
Good. Okay. Great.
And Mark, can you just briefly, during FNF, we're going to approve a change order. Can you just briefly go with the change order now? So as part of FNF, we'll just approve it. I think it was like a $57,000 lighting change order perhaps.
That, that change order was, is a lighting change order for the parking lot expansion that we did. So we had gotten pricing, I don't have the document, if I have the document in front of me. We got original pricing on that. It was, it was more than, more than what the change order ended up being.
So you could just, again, just tell us what it was and then we'll prove that 57 is part of FNF. But again, since we're talking about everything right now, it's probably appropriate for you just to kind of let us know that.
For the parking lot expansion, we needed to do the additional lighting along the property, along the west side of the property. So we had shorter light fixtures involved in that project. So we did a change order to the pool project to have that work installed by the same contractor who was already doing the underground work and running the piping on the site.
Yeah, they were there and everything.
They were there and so the equipment was there, yeah. So it was an expansion of what they were already doing. So a change order was added to their original contract.
Right. Does that come out of contingency, Dan? Is that where we're pulling it from?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Is that?
No.
No?
No, no, we're, we're, we're charging that to a separate account for the west parking lot.
Okay, great.
So we're going to need it into the contingency.
Pull that. Okay.
Yeah, I, because I want to be clear on that because I thought you mentioned that committee that it's not a plus $57,000. It's how that is, how that cost is accounted for.
Correct.
Is that correct, Dan?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, if you guys brought it up, I'm happy. Thanks for that information.
Excellent. Anything else, Mark? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And it's my report?
Okay, there we go. We had two FOIA requests this month and as required, I will read those in to the record. We received a FOIA request on 10/28/2019. Response deadline was 11/4/2019. The requester was Luis Lares from the Bricklayers Labor Management Cooperative Committee in Elbers, Illinois. She requested certified payroll for Rosco Mason Contractors for work performed at Vernon Hills High School, 50 Lakeview Parkway in Vernon Hills, Illinois from April 2019 through the present. Follow-up is done by Dan Stanley and Carol Scodin. We responded on 11/1/2019. Time spent on the request, approximately 2.5 hours. We received a second FOIA request on 10/31/2019. The response deadline was 10/7/2019. The requester was Tim P. Dwyer. Requested legal bills paid for fiscal year 2018-19 by the district. Follow-up was done by Brian Kelly and legal and business office staff. We responded on 10/7/2019. Time spent, approximately four hours plus legal fees. And Pat, that includes a super tester.
Okay. So one other highlight is you guys are probably going to leave. In PMP, we are going to cover 2020 and 2021 curriculum proposals, right? And I would like you guys to know is that on page three of the long list of things is a proposal to change the name of Integrated PE to Inclusive PE. So if you recall, that was part of the discussion we had last week. So you were fully informed. Kudos to everybody for the feedback.
Great. Good job.
With that, my guess is you have more important things to do. You guys are welcome to stay. Welcome to go, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Consent vote agenda is listed. Can I ask for motion to approve the consent vote agenda?
Motion to approve the consent vote agenda.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Program and Personnel, I'll take that since.
Thank you.
Chairperson Bass is not here. Amended school calendar.
As the board will remember, last month, we passed a calendar 5.2. We had some extensive conversation about the placement of the grading day at the end of the first semester in order to make the calendar work. So after the calendar was passed, the board asked us to go back and take a look at the calendar. We met the very next day, spent about 90 minutes on the calendar with the district leadership team, made some adjustments to the calendar. And now that particular grading day, first semester grading day, will be the last Friday before we leave for winter break. And we basically pulled the calendar forward one more day moving forward. And we reviewed that with the Board and Committee again. So our recommendation is to approve the amended school calendar for 2020, 2021.
All right, is there a motion to approve the calendar estimate?
I motion to approve the calendar.
Second.
Any further discussion? No, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Our curriculum proposal is read out.
So we reviewed at committee a number of curriculum proposals. I can review all of them if you would like, or we can simply say that the curriculum proposals are designed to promote access for students to new opportunities as well as to rename and redefine curriculum in ways that more appropriately address the curriculum that is being taught. We have a new pathways to quantitative literacy and statistics course that was developed in line with College of Lake County to provide students who completed the course access to credit during courses in college, something that's been worked on for a number of years. So that's a new course and the others are mainly changes that really adapt the course name and curriculum to more appropriately meet the needs of students.
Good. We have planning discussion. Good, Mary. All right, is there a motion to approve the curriculum proposal?
Some. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Project Choice, we're approving.
Okay, our Director of Special Education, Kelly, here with his journey this again this evening. Kelly spent some substantive time with us in Program and Personnel Committee last week, and I mean that in a good way. Again, very indicative of the depth of discussion that we have. As a very brief overview, we are recommending that we take a sector program back from CEDOL, that sector program we call a Project Choice program. That, taking back that program will, we've taken back a number of other CEDOL sector programs over the years. And that is something that CEDOL actually encourages and supports. When we do that, taking over that program, among other things, will ensure that all of our students that have a need for that program will be able to attend that program within our school district. We will hire the teacher, we will hire the sports for that, we will write the curriculum for that, we will evaluate the curriculum for that. And it will in fact become our program. We had some additional discussion about cost of the program. And so Dan and Kelly and Bryant spent time together this last week. And we believe the cost benefit analysis for this is really in favor for moving the program back. It's a bit more expensive, but there are definitely some benefits in doing that. And I believe from some conversation earlier with Bryant that Kelly actually has some good news from CEDOL in terms of the handful of students that are actually from other districts in Lake County and how they will be served in that program next year. I think there's some encouraging news about that. So I think, you know, we'll give Kelly a chance to add any other comments. But we want to share financials. I think Dan has a sheet for you in terms of our comparison. And certainly have Kelly share what I think is some really good news about how those young people may be served that are outside our district or currently attending the program. So Kelly, with that as a lead in.
A lead? That is the story.
Well, see, you taught me very well. I understand the story. That's good.
You never knew. You're no special head.
That's right, for sure.
I'd just like to review for you, I suppose, a multitude of what I would call the stars aligning leading to this conversation this evening. Currently, we represent, District 128 students represent more than 50% of the students in the educational life skills classroom that we call Project Choice within our district. Our population is projected to stay at that size, if not grow larger, over the next few years. So I feel that we have a healthy and robust number right now to maintain a nice, strong program and community, classroom community for a population of our student body. The teacher of the class, who is a CEDOL employee, Karen Martin, she has been an amazing asset to Vernon Hills, District 128, CEDOL and our ELS classroom. But she is entering her second career retirement at the end of this year, deservedly so. So it's a, a nice time in the sense that there will be a new teacher, no matter what, in that program. The site is already housed in our district, so we know that we have the space and materials for the students for next year. And most importantly, I think, as you saw last month and as you celebrated tonight, we have a very highly self-aware student body who consider themselves friends, classmates and advocates for, who embrace the inclusion of all of our students and who value the gifts that these really unique learners bring to our community and our schools. We had a very healthy conversation last week. I appreciate your time and your thoughtfulness. And I felt really blessed to be able to relay to CEDOL administration in follow-up to that meeting, your care and concern for the students who are out of district students who would be displaced by taking this program over. Ultimately, it would be four students because the fifth one will be moving on to transition programming next year. And I had some fantastic news, you stole my thunder, Prentice, that three of those four students are from one district. And there are already two known high schools, one of them a homeschool or home district to those students who are very willing and excited to take this program into their fold. But more importantly, it would bring those students closer back to their communities and their peer groups. You know, as a reminder, and as, as you touched on, Prentice, CEDOL, their administrative team has been incredibly supportive, enthusiastic about this idea. They have been more than willing to spend time with me. Even today, I spent two hours with the sector supervisor talking about programming and curriculum and budget concerns as far as materials and teaching things needs may go. And they continue to relay, I got an email about an hour and a half ago to me, you know, whatever you need, let us know. We want this to be seamless. We want to be supportive for the district, for the students, for their families, for the staff. So it really, we are really in a positive space for making this take back at this time.
Dan, you want to touch on, thank you, Kelly.
Yes, great job. Thanks, sir.
Want to give us the overview on financials?
Absolutely. So what you have before you is a, a one-page but two-sided analysis that we put together. And what it breaks down to is really two sections. The yellow is the cost of our existing program this year. The blue would be is if we house that program this year. And I'll explain why we did this year. And then the green is the difference, right? Yellow and blue is green, right? So, so that, that shows you essentially the difference. And so on the left, so it's really organized by the types of services. So as you can see, there are a lot of different services that we have to take into account. And so our biggest task is making sure we're trying to account for all the services and then figuring out how are those currently being provided? And they're being provided in multiple different ways. And how will then they be provided with this program in-house? So the way it's broken up then is two main sections. The first section is the students that are here now in this program, in the building, student kids on site is what I call it. And then the other one is there, the students that are outplaced right now off-site and there's costs associated with that. So we went through, so the scope in terms of like literally who's employee, who is doing this service and how are we paying for it? Really, the services break out in a few ways. It's built into either to tuition that we pay to CEDOL or another organization. We get billed directly, so meaning as that service is incurred, that company will bill us, whether it be CEDOL or somebody else. Or we have, our own employees are participating in these services in some ways. There's some question marks here that you'll see, but really the question marks are just, we don't know and it doesn't really matter because it's not really going to be different either way. So we're highlighting the differences, meaning transportation. So the, the kids that come here, we transport them here. Next year, if the program is taken back, we will still transport them here. I don't actually know how much it costs to transport those six kids because they're on a bus with other kids, but it doesn't matter because it's not going to. But that's something we have to consider for sure for those kids that are outplaced because there's a very particular cost to that that varies. So to boil it down, you're talking, in a nutshell, we're estimating conservatively, with one caveat that I need to explain, is that it'll cost about $18,000 more. Now, that is, that is a bit on the high end. For us, it very, very, very well could cost no difference at the end of the day. When we take into account all the pluses and minuses, that's because we're a bit more conservative on our cost for classroom aids. We had a higher annual salary than probably would be typical, but we're trying, we're really trying to be conservative as we went through each line. The other one is there's some SLP services that would be ideal. We have a cost, we have a, we have a particular cost that we would know if we staffed it, but we think the reality of it is it would be very difficult to find a particular person to do this role for that period of time.
SLP, speech-language pathologist.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I say SLP?
You fell into my acronym.
I'm so sorry. Apologies. Yeah. So the reality is, is we know if you staff that, it would be less, so we just think the likelihood that you're going to have to contract for this service out. So it very, very well could be, and I played with the numbers too to say, what if, you know, salaries were a little bit lower and you could do this, you, you're very, very close easily. But big thing to note is, obviously, the cost impact of this is depending on those kids coming back, which is not a for-sure guarantee, truthfully, but you know, that's a big driver. So if neither of those kids do come back, this is a significantly more expensive program.
Meaning they come back, we have all the costs associated with the program, but we're not getting reimbursed?
No, so essentially, if those, the students that are out, if they stay out, you're still transporting them, so part of the cost, part of the reason for the cost coming down is you have to pay tuition for those programs, and you're also avoiding the transportation cost, which is significant.
In what circumstances will those students stay out?
No, I don't know.
So those would be, it's a great question, those would be IEP team decisions and conversations based on the information we have right now about these two particular students. We believe that they are both in a place where the team, meaning our school, district representatives, the representatives from their therapeutic day school, the representatives being their staff working hands-on, if you will, with those students, and then also their parents and anybody to the team that the parent may bring in. The situation is ripe for those conversations to be happening about those students coming back to what we would call a less restrictive placement, meaning they're back in their home environment versus a therapeutic day school. Those students are demonstrating skills that reflect, they are ready to come into a public school milieu. We may need to ramp up the level of support. So for example, right now, both of these students are in program, public, excuse me, private therapeutic day schools where the staffing ratio may be one teacher and one TA to every two, let me do it this way, one TA to every two students. So it's a very small staffing ratio where they don't necessarily have a one-to-one TA in that program, but coming back into our milieu to begin with, we would probably recommend a more conservative approach of staffing them with a one-to-one TA with the goal of fading that down over that student's demonstration of readiness to do that. You know, coming into a public high school environment, you're coming into a building with 1,400 to 2,000 students, bells, assemblies, electives, you know, the chaos of hallways, homecoming, all the things that make a high school a high school, but that can be a little overwhelming for students, which is why we have private and public therapeutic day school options. But these particular students are both showing readiness. One conversation is actively happening with a family, the other conversation is just beginning with a family. The reason that that's happening now in both of these students' cases is because the class size of this sector site was at max last spring, when their, when their therapeutic day school teams were saying, hey, we feel that we should start having these conversations, but we didn't have a spot in our program. And the students were doing well, it was the beginning of the conversation. You can imagine when your student has significant needs, when any student has needs, that it's not a snap decision, that there's a lot that goes into that process with families and with their teams to ensure it's the right choice for the student. So I can't promise they will be back, but I can't, I feel confident that we are having conversations that are leading us down that path.
All right, so let's go through that. I always get lost, I apologize in this conversation. So this, that's $20,000 more, round numbers, right? So it's not a big, it's not a big number, right? And the risk is, these two students may not come back. So far, so good?
So far, so good.
The assumption is they will come back, right?
Correct.
In this model, right? If they don't come back, what's the financial risk? How much?
That would be basically the 200 that's on the first difference on your, on page one.
Two, two.
200. Because that's staffing the program. And it would, it would be slightly, it would be slightly less because this is accounting for more, it wouldn't be, it actually wouldn't be that high. I think it would be probably more 140s range, I think I ran that, because you wouldn't have, you know, all the, all those, because the scenario we ran here is assuming those students are back in the related services, those, the related services we'd have to provide accounted for back as well. So if they're not back, then those costs wouldn't go up, so does that make sense?
Yeah, I think what you said is if they, if they don't come back, some of what we assumed we would have to spend, we may not have to spend.
That is true.
Okay, because that was kind of where my head was going at. I mean, how, how much flex do we have in this? If we don't get the students, do we have to spend all money? And can we at least have that conversation before we just assume we're another 200 plus in the hole? Right? Because frankly, the way I look at it, first of all, I think this looks, it looks really good. My heart is beating, Dan, it wasn't beating when I first looked at the page, but I did understand the numbers.
I did, I did.
Thank you very much for explaining that.
So I ran it, if they did, if they did not come back, it would be a plus of about 130.
Okay.
By taking out the related services that are all involved. The other, the other thing that I could point out is, these are the costs based on this year, whereas everything we're talking about is next year, but that's particularly tricky because we don't know what the tuition or the related services will cost next year, but when we figured the order of magnitude, what, what.
When push comes to shove, let's just say when you finally know who's coming and all that kind of stuff, and this big, long list of everything we're proposing to do, is that what we absolutely have to do, or do we have some room to discuss, you know?
So some of.
If it was, if we were $150,000, $130,000 more, maybe that's okay, maybe it's not. But would we have an opportunity to have a conversation about what we could do to close some of all that gap, or is that really not something we could do?
The, the numbers, if you look at, in the blue, the third column cost calculations, you'll see numbers like 0.4 FTE, 0.5 days per week, numbers like that. Those numbers right now are based on the needs as listed in the students' IEPs today. So.
So the two kids, the two kids come back.
That includes the two kids, that's correct. So some of those may go down.
Okay.
By attrition of not having those students return. The other piece is that, you know, Dan mentioned that we looked at this from a conservative means or conservative lens, so some of this is inclusive.
So it's, yes.
Of like assistive tax support that would be new to us, so I would consider it like a startup cost. It's something I may see us needing to contract some support with next year as we work for that seamless transition for the students and staff, but that we could probably fade out over time as we build that knowledge and skills of our own staff. I think the other piece that is important to remember is that, and what we discussed in committee, is that this recommendation is based on our program being housed right now at Vernon Hills, and that I feel strongly that next year, that is the right move to make. This is a building that loves this population of students, that knows and has included this population of students. However, we have a wider continuum of students who have modified curricular needs, and the program for those students is housed over at Libertyville. So to the point you're making, Pat, you know, if we looked at combining, or it's not combining, but centralizing these programs into one building or the other, I think that some of these costs and FTE needs would become merged together.
Okay.
And could be served in more of that continuum.
Okay, all right. So what do we need? We need a motion tonight to move ahead, is that, what is?
Whereas, let's, I think the motion is, we are recommending that District 128 takes back what we term the Project Choice program, sector program from CEDOL. So the motion would be around that.
All right, so is there a motion to take back Project Choice from CEDOL to District 128?
So much.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? I guess the one point I ask, you know, when we get down to the nitty-gritty of it, I'm assuming we'll have some discussion when we set budgets for that year, right?
Well, it'll be part of our, it'll be part of our internal staffing discussion.
Right, okay.
And Pat, before you guys vote, it's also fair to say that the numbers in this program could increase.
Yes.
Okay, so.
We never know.
We're looking, we're looking right now and next year, okay? And three years from now, the numbers could be higher, and then the cost per student is going to go down, right, the higher the numbers are in the program. Conversely, we could have a year where the numbers are a little lower, but you're looking probably at an average, you know, over a period of time. And Dan and Bryant and Kelly were very conservative, they reviewed the data with me, they were very conservative in their assumptions.
But that's right, at some point, it might be helpful if we could sort of understand the elasticity of this whole thing, if we had X more kids, what happens? If we had X fewer kids, what happens? How many kids could we possibly think, well, don't need it for a while? But just so we have the right due diligence and we don't, you know, I'll call it side up or something.
I'd imagine it's a hard number to come to though, because each challenge has a different set of.
Well, that's, that's true.
Challenges that they come up with.
Never gets different.
So I wouldn't ask you for numbers that we would hold you to.
I guess, this would be one, the only thing I would ask for is like, just what are the assumptions? And we're sitting here today and we're looking at, it's a $20,000 difference, that's not a big deal, so there's some assumptions built into that. It'd be nice to just kind of follows away so that when it changes, which it will, we can go back to the assumptions and say, well, this is the assumption we made and this is what actually happened.
Well, you know what the numbers are built on.
Otherwise, we get all confused.
I'm sorry.
You know what the numbers are projected, we're assuming, we're assuming the two kids.
We're looking at eight.
Eight altogether. So these assumptions are built on eight students.
I would say with 100% confidence, seven minimum, and the eighth one, like I said, that conversation's just beginning. And, and I think that I could give you numbers with the two programs that I mentioned being separated, and I could give you a very different picture with the two programs being together and having a fluidity of a continuum of support that could be adven flowed between those programs. And I know that sounds very wishy-washy, but I don't know how better to quantify in language.
That would be, that would be, that would provide us with a base.
I'm sorry?
That would provide us with a base.
Sort of just high, high-level base what the assumptions are. What I don't want you to do is spend a whole lot of time on it and get it precisely wrong. Okay. Because that's what, that's what can happen.
Okay.
But just enough so that when, when things change from what we assume, which they will, we could just easily say, well, this is what happened.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, otherwise, I think it's a great program, it's a good discussion last weekend tonight. It's exciting, actually.
It is.
I'm still nervous about the centralization thing, even though I see all the advantages of that. I still see those two people over here last month, and I thought they did a great job, and I still stick with them, so.
Well, we've challenged our very talented staff to do.
Figure this out.
A lot of different things, and I have every confidence that if centralization was the best way to serve these students, that they would come up.
Highly confident you're going to work together and come up with the best decision.
Yes, come up with a way to make sure.
And you're far more capable of doing that than we are. Not much we're clear about.
Agreed.
All right.
Okay, so.
Did somebody make the motion?
Yes, made a motion, I'm sorry.
I missed it.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Is that me? Aye!
Lundstedt.
Aye.
That was a, that was a, we spent another half million dollars, wasn't it? I think I wish that, I'm voting that's right.
Motion carries. This is what happens when you have too many games, too close together at the same time. Everybody's getting there.
Too many complex, too many complex discussions.
Okay. Chairperson Huber.
Yes, we need to get the levy through, so I am going to turn it over to Dan, well, briefly, because this is, what, number four? Fourth item, this sample, for the last?
Yes.
Okay, so briefly talk about the numbers, then I'm going to read the resolution into the record, then we will hopefully have a motion and approval on.
Yeah, you don't have to read like all the resolutions, just.
Just the numbers?
Or just what the resolutions are.
Okay.
And then, so that y'all know what you're voting on.
Yeah.
And then later, everyone can be sure, oh, this is what they're voting on.
Yeah, just give us the big number and then we'll break it down by.
Yeah, so one, one point of note is, we, I received confirmation about, from the county, that one of the big numbers in our new construction was wrong, the number that was.
I thought it was.
Yep, so the, the EAV was correct, however, the field that, that is coded for new construction, the field that was put in for us, for that parcel, was the fair market value, not the assessed value. And the assessed value is supposed to be.
A third.
A third. So instead of 3.6 million of new construction for that property, the new, the new construction is actually 1.2. So that changes our new construction from 18 some million back down to 15 million, which is, makes more sense to me. So historically, we've been about 13 to 14 million of new property, new construction, so this is right in line with knowing, there's a bit more going on with cuneo, really. That, that's really the new construction that's happening in our taxing district. The other stuff is stiff, and you can talk about it in 23 years, 22 years. So happy to have that discussion then.
So there are not many more cuneo-type properties available in these two towns, so it's going to get tighter and tighter.
Oh, it's, it's true, but coming from a town that was, that I previously worked at that was also highly desirable to live in, it's amazing where they find places to build houses. It's absolutely amazing. So with that, the recommended levy presented to you in total is the same as that you've seen since, the one exception is I rounded a number to the nearest 100,000, so it added $11,000 technically, but it looks much more cleaner on the reports. So the levy request increase is a 2.85%, but we're not estimating that we'll actually hit that, we're estimating that it'll be, sorry, I don't know where to put that number. So we have a cushion in there of a bit over 300,000. So as a reminder, the way this works is you ask for the amount of money, then they will calculate when we get the final numbers in hopefully March and April. County is very aware of the timeline that they're under to make sure the tax bills are not late coming out in the spring. So when we get those final numbers of EAV and new property, those will get plugged into the algebraic formula, our limiting rate will be calculated, and then they will determine the amount of taxes that you're allowed to get. As a reminder to the board and the community, the amount of taxes the district is allowed to receive is basically the amount of money you got last year adjusted for inflation. CPI is the inflation factor used, and that, that more or less is what's happening. New property is then allowed to be added on top, which is the 15 million of EAV that we're talking about, so that will generate the 2.4 more or less we're going to.
And Dan, EAV, what's CPI for, for this calculation?
CPI is 1.9%.
Okay.
So it's the consumer price index, it's a federal number that's determined by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, we find that out about the third week of January. So we've known about that number for quite a while and built that into our projections.
So again, for the community, the 1.9, okay, on the aggregate, and then new growth.
Yep.
And the new growth is no additional cost to taxpayers, correct?
Correct. What, and then the way, the way it works, right, is on aggregate, the existing properties that were there and on the books before would go up on an average of 1.9%. Individual properties will go up or down more or less than 1.9% relative to how that value changed relative to the average. So the, so the data that I'm seeing from when you mush both townships together and just our properties, it looks like the existing properties are going up about 1.7 or 1.8% existing values. So if that's on average, then if, for example, think of your own, if you all got your letters, if your assessment went up by more than 1.8, your taxes will likely go up by more than 1.9%. If your assessment went down or down, if it went up by less than 1.8 or it went down, then your taxes will either go up by less than 1.9, maybe they'll go down. So that, so each individual property is relative to their own value change, but the aggregate effect is 1.9 on the whole group.
But I need to explain to you really well. If your assessment went up more than 1.8%, you can expect your property taxes. you can expect your property taxes, at least for the District 128 portion, right? A bunch of the impact that really, your taxes would go up more than 1.9%.
Yes.
If it went up less than 1.8%, your taxes would go up less than 1.9%.
Correct.
So it should work.
So, so now really what you're talking, our levy now, you can, it's rounding right out about 80 million. So that's a rough number you can use to think about how much is our levy. In terms of the resources that students are talking about and celebrating everything you do, this is one of the most important things that the board does is to secure the largest resource that you have.
Well, as you're clear, it's 95% of our funding, right?
The property taxes are about 88% of refunding. Local sources are 95%. But property taxes would be about 88%.
National average is about 50.
Yep. Another thing that I need to let you know of note is the total amount did not change, but the individual levies amount have changed since we talked about this last week in committee. The, some of the discussions that we've had about deferring our property taxes, right? If we move in that direction, which we'll, we have an agenda to talk about in December, if we move in that direction, that changes the landscape in terms of how we would levy. What do I mean? A lot of you know, we've been, we've been trying to be extremely diligent on managing our fund balance, both on an aggregate level and looking at each individual fund. Because if each individual fund, if one of those gets out of line, then you can create problems for yourselves that you don't really need to have. So we've been managing that very particularly. However, I've been managing that very particularly under the assumption of I get half of the levy one year and half of the next levy the next year. So when I, so this levy, for example, I planned out when we budgeted last year because I know what CPI is and I plan all that stuff out. Well, now, if you go to deferring all the property taxes, that kind of, that changes the math a bit for me. And so what I had to do last week, right, an unintended consequence of potentially deferring is I had to redo some of our financials and anticipate what would happen for fiscal year '21. Because essentially, what you would be doing right now, if we did move to fully defer these taxes, is you are setting the property tax revenue for fiscal year '21. Normally, if you're levying, you're really setting the money for half of, half of fiscal year that you're in, the other half that you already, or that you're going to have next. So I needed to take that into account. When I did take that into account, if I didn't change anything, you'd have some fund balances that got just too low. Because we're, we're managing them assuming early taxes were included. Now, if we're moving early taxes, I need to take that into account and make sure they don't get too low. So I've adjusted some of these numbers to prevent that from happening for fiscal year '21, really fiscal year '20 and fiscal year '21. So I'm trying to do preventative means, but I had to look at that again. So those individuals' numbers changed, but the total amount is still the same.
Okay, so, oh, this is your, this is your.
Yeah, great, thanks, Dan. So again, I think we are going to seek for a motion, an approval for the certificate of tax levy is listed on page four, or four of 18 on your materials, and a resolution that states the Board of Education of Community High School District 128, et cetera, et cetera. The sum of, and this is how it's broken down. You want me to read this into the record or you just want it approved as presented?
Yeah, you can read those numbers and then the other, and then I would just particularly point out the other resolutions that are also.
How about we have a motion to approve the resolutions as presented in the package from the, what's your title, deputy?
Assistant Superintendent.
Assistant Superintendent, because I don't want to call you CFO. Assistant Superintendent.
Kind of is.
Exactly, as presented.
There you go.
Will you get that motion, please? Where do you want me to read it in the record? I certainly can do that as well.
Why don't you read it in the record? This one's big enough and it's important enough.
So the main resolution to add the property tax levy for 2019, the Board of Education of Community High School District Number 128. County of Lake, State of Illinois has ascertained and determined and we hereby certify that we require, one, the sum of $49.2 million to be levied as special tax for educational purposes. And two, the sum of $12.6 million to be levied as special tax for operations and maintenance purposes. And three, the sum of $3 million to be levied as special tax for transportation purposes. And four, the sum of $860,000 to be levied as special tax for working cash fund. Five, $1 million to be levied as special tax for municipal retirement purposes. Six, $1.5 million to be levied as special tax for social security purposes. Seven, $150,000 to be levied as special tax for tort immunity purposes. The sum of $12 million to be levied as special tax for special education purposes. The sum of $160,000 to be levied as special tax for leasing of educational facilities or computer technology or both and temporary relocation expense purposes. And the sum of $176,576 to be levied as special tax for Special Education District of Lake County Municipal Retirement Purposes on the taxable property of our district for the year 2019. So therefore, be resolved when we have that resolution as read into the record.
So moved. Second.
Any questions regarding that or anything else that Dan has presented? Seeing none, Carol, you want to call it out?
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, do you want us to, motion carries. Be okay with all those? I mean, those basically get the rest of the resolutions into the record, I believe, right? I mean, those, the rest of them are just simple, the specific dollar amounts that Pat has to sign in and then we just pass a resolution. Right?
That's true.
I think.
To truly answer your question, I probably would lean more towards.
The attorney?
Into the table to see what he thinks.
I think you can join all of the resolutions as presented to effectuate the dollar amounts that you just read into the record.
So, okay, so are we good?
No, I think you need to then make a motion to pass the corresponding resolutions relating to each dollar amount that you just read into the record.
All right, they have a motion to pass the corresponding and the remainder of the resolutions included for the dollar amounts as read into the record, please.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Questions regarding that? Attorney's kind of addressed how to give in there. All right, Carol, you want to call it?
Rooney.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
All right, we have a truth in taxation certificate of compliance that we need to do. Dan, anything on that?
Yeah, yes, sorry. My assumption was that would have been included in the group, but I guess it does not have a dollar amount associated. So then I would lean on the safe side and say, sure.
All right, well, this is again, this is a document that Pat has to sign that certifies truth in taxation of all the materials that have been presented by Dan. So as a board, submit, want to make that motion, so Pat can sign it.
Rick, would you, would you agree with Dan's assessment? Maybe that by the way we did that, that that's just enjoined with all what we did a moment ago? Part of the package, even though it didn't, doesn't have a dollar amount?
Well, I would agree with it, but I think at this point, because we didn't put a dollar amount on there, reading that into the record is probably the best way to go.
Okay. So we have to do it individually, Kevin, like you said.
Again, all this says is that the levy is not going to exceed 105%.
It says that we're, so we all, we have to comply with truth in taxation. This is our certification certifying that we have complied with the Truth in Taxation Act.
You don't have to.
I'm sorry, next year, we'll have a better, all the better rundown. Sorry.
So we're all good. So again, can we have a motion to approve the truth in taxation certificate of compliance as presented and explained?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Who said so moved?
Dan.
Don.
About four people. All right, any questions on that? Thank you for getting us on the right path. And Carol, call it.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.